Call the Oatana City Council meeting to order for Tuesday, March 17th. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Svenby.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Okerberg.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the council members and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the Constitution, on the nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here for our meeting tonight and for St. Patrick's Day, so enjoy yourself afterwards also. And with that, we will move on to the agenda, and we have no additions to the agenda, I believe?
The addition of 3.5.6, Resolution 3715 is an addition.
Thirty-five point?
Thirty-seven point fifteen.
Okay.
It's 3.5.6, the resolution.
Yep. That has been added, so with that, we'll look for a motion to...
This was noted.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to approve what the addition. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with this, we will now move on to public hearings. Resolution 28-15, Resolution to Decertify the TIF Parcels. And we'll go to Troy.
Good evening. We have a number of resolutions here tied to Gateway Phase Two apartment building downtown, and it's a 36-unit apartment building. It's the second phase of the Gateway Apartments to go in conjunction with what we have there now. There's a number of resolutions here to establish a TIF district, and the reason we wanted to go with the TIF district on this is, one, we own the land right now, and to help them get their funding through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency is, we did propose that we would give them the land with the intent of establishing a TIF district to pay ourselves back through tax increment financing. We also have a few projects around the site that we would like to utilize TIF funding for. One is, we have a parking lot on the east side that needs another row of paved parking, and we would like to do that with the TIF funds, as well as widening out the alley on the south side another eight feet to make it two-way traffic. We also have some overhead power lines that would run in between the two buildings that we would like to get those buried underground. And so with those public improvements, and they're all public improvements, the project part of it are all public improvements that would be paid for by the tax increment financing district, and so we would like to establish that. There's a process we need to go through, one of which is to hold a public hearing with a number of resolutions, and we do have our consultant Ed Cheetah here from Advanced Resources that can help explain some of these resolutions.
Thank you. Good evening, Ed Cheetah, Advanced Resources. As usual, Troy's provided some good background on everything. A couple of the resolutions have become, I think, are somewhat housekeeping resolutions. One, the property currently lies within the tax increment district that was originally established for Gateway. We had a larger redevelopment district in that area. We were unable to use that district. There's a...after five years after certification of an original district, you cannot make additional expenditures and hope to recover them out of tax increments. So, so much time has gone by. That district was back in 99. We just can't make any use of that, so it isn't possible to go back and say, "Let's use that and take care of this project." Yeah, and you might also just, you know, I think it's just appreciate the fact that so much time has gone by. There's...that was the action to do the original was a different council and everything. This body, you know, this is considering something totally new at this time. So, you can't have parcels in two TIF districts, obviously, so that we have to go through the mechanical process here to remove that. The losses pass a resolution and give that information to the county, and they will then remove those. There's a...and then we have the resolution itself that establishes a project area in a tax increment district, and so that, in this instance, this would be a housing tax increment district because they're going to be using housing for...
I'll pop the mortgage here.
Closing tax credits.
Housing tax credits. So, the use of housing tax credits and the use of tax increment financing and everything result in where they can, I guess, are referred to in the housing industry as shallow subsidies. These aren't big vouchers for rent or everything, but they combine together to reduce the cost of the project and to lower the cost of the rent, and it's lowered in such a way that they have to meet a statutory guideline that 20% of the units in the project have to be made, have to be rented by individuals at 50% or less of the median income. In this instance, because of the use of the tax credits, this whole project qualifies. It's a proposed 36-unit project. As a housing district, it can last for a period of up to 25 years of the collection of tax increment. As Troy said in this one, the costs in this one are the costs of contributing the land in and then some related public improvements. And again, this varies a little bit from other ones we've used. Most frequently, the emphasis here is to use tax increment where it's pay-as-you-go. Developer incurs 100% of the cost. We enter into a development agreement. They build the project. They take all of the financial risk of the project, and they receive tax increment to reimburse certain costs. In this instance, it looks more like a bond in the sense that the city's incurred some costs on the front end. It's relying on the increment to pay itself back. As an additional measure to ensure that that happens, the development agreement is fashioned a little bit differently. Yet, we require in those instances considerably more investigation and discussion with the county assessor to make certain that the value that they're saying will be there. They look at the comps and everything. So, we would have an assessment agreement that establishes a minimum value for this project, and taxes based off of that should be sufficient to pay the city back. And then there is also a backup to that is that we know that the tax code and things can change. Sometimes rates and things can get juggled around a little bit. There is, in addition to that, there's a shortfall guarantee in the agreement that says they will pay at least an amount up to that minimum value in a tax payment regardless of any underlying sort of statutory change. The value will be established at the county, but the thing that always you can tinker with over time is, you know, our taxes in Minnesota, we have class rates, and every now and then, the legislature determines, "Well, let's adjust that rate." Well, the rate on this is already fairly low. It's lower than, say, the rate on a single-family home. I don't think it would get adjusted, but if they tweaked it down even a little bit, that would kick in that shortfall. So, we try to take the measures here that would, you know, facilitate what they're trying to accomplish, meet what the county thinks is supposed to be appropriate value for that, and have enough increment to generate back to service those costs plus interest on that which you're contributing in in this situation. So, that's the financial mechanics of that. So, again, it's a housing district. It is going to be upfront costs in this situation, and it could last for a maximum time period of up to 25 years.
So, the upfront costs, it's upfront costs and it's in their entirety in a bond? It's not, we upfront some of the initial costs?
Well, you're not actually bonding in this instance. You're gonna...the land you already own, so that's fairly valued. That's going in, and you're recovering. That's money you already expended. And then there'll be some of these public improvements. They're not enormously large. You're not going to bond for them. They'll come out of your normal budgets for those items, but they will, in fact, be capitalized in an account and tracked as part of the obligation of the tax increment district, and as increment comes in, that will be paid back, and those funds would then be returned to those different accounts over time.
Was there any cash that goes back to the developer?
No.
For any of the other...
No, not in this instance. We need all of the increment. And there's one other, and then that brings us to the last resolution associated with this project, the part, my part of this conversation on the tax increment, is that any time that we interfund or create debt within the city, whether we bond or not. When you bond, every time, you know, you guys issue a bond resolution and everything when you bond, the state auditor has asked us with tax increment financing, they interpret the law in such a way, they ask us to pass what's called an interfund resolution. So, we're actually passing a resolution that would, is tantamount to like the resolution that the city passes with a bond. And that just simply legally says, "You follow the law legally to interfund money. You've established an interest rate with it. You've established terms to pay it back." It doesn't actually obligate you, you know, the costs themselves are tied to the tax increment. This will satisfy the state auditor that there's a proper method for tracking and auditing this. So, those are...those are the three resolutions directly related to the establishment of this project. Any other questions? Yes?
I think earlier you mentioned that you would have, or that would be 20% of the units would be affordable or for low income, and then I think you mentioned all of the units would be for low income. Is that correct?
It is correct in this, that the...all of the units under this program qualify...the program itself has a requirement to get tax credits that's more restrictive than the requirement for tax increment financing. Tax increment financing sets a minimum threshold, so they have to document back to us that at least 20% of the units are rented to persons or families in that unit that make less than 50% of the area median income. In other words, half of them above the income, half are below. They gotta be in that below half. In this instance, their actual financing that the state provides has it more restrictive. Just by meeting that, they're going to conform to the tax increment financing, and all of their units have to meet that. That's correct.
Then you answered my second question ahead, which was regarding that compliance of the rents. So, we get something certified like on a yearly basis that they're renting?
Yes, they're required within the...that is, we actually require that. That's another thing, the state auditor. They go...if they ever audit us on this, they will ask us, "You did a housing district. Did you comply with seeing that those units actually were occupied by individuals meeting the income guidelines that you set this up under?" And so we...they...this developer is familiar with these types of programs, and they would just simply certify that on an annual basis back to the city, which would be...the way that works, and again, it's a mechanical thing. That's certified really to the finance department. They've got, you know, they know they have to get that before they can turn over tax increment on a semi-annual basis.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll open up the public hearing at 7:14. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this issue, please come forward and sign in by the mic. Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
We have a motion by Brent Svenby to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed at 7:15, and now it is the council's turn to comment or question. So, is there any questions or comments from the council?
The second question I would have probably more for Troy. Back when we first discussed this project, how did we arrive at, or what was the...how did we establish the need for the housing, given current, what's currently available? How do we...what's the process for determining the need?
Well, we have a housing study that documents the needs citywide, covering all types of housing that we have a need for. So, we have a housing study done every three years. 2013 was the last one. It ranges from senior housing to single-family housing to affordable housing, and in, within there, we do have a need for, I think it's 40, between 40 and 50 units, you know, over the next seven years. So, this does fall within that study that we do have a need for that.
Anyone else? Dave?
What number are we talking for median income in Steel County? Is that adjusted annually, or...
It's on page three of...
Page three.
Page three?
Yeah.
Is that the annual, is that the annual five? So, for annually four, that would be like thirty-four, thirty-six dollars.
See it, Dave?
Thirty-six dollars.
Thirty-six is the median. Okay. That's the number they start with.
Yeah. Then it gotta be below that. Be below thirty-six.
Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? We do have a number of motions here to deal with, and I will start with Resolution 2815, Resolution to Decertify the Parcel TIF-1-6. What is the council's wishes on this?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, we move on to Resolution 29-15 to approve Development District Seven and TIF Seven Dash One. What is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Jeff Okerberg to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Moving down to Resolution 30-15 to authorize, authorization of interfund loan transfer to TIF Seven Dash One. What is the council's wishes there?
Motion to approve 30-15.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okerberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving down to Resolution 35-15, approve preliminary plat for Gateway addition. What is the council's wishes there?
Well, I can give a quick summary. These next two things are zoning requests. They went to the planning commission.
Okay.
And we're including them in with everything else because we're talking about one project here. So, the preliminary plat of Gateway addition is really just the subdividing of the property into two lots. One that'll be owned by the city, which will have the city parking lot. The rest will be conveyed to the developer for the apartment project. We are looking at retaining about eight additional feet on the south side for alley right-of-way. Otherwise, this is a pretty simple plat. All the utilities and everything are in place already. Really, it's just a re-dividing up of the property for this project.
Thank you, Troy. And what is the council's wishes on this?
Some move to approve.
We have a motion by Jeff Okerberg to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, moving down to the variants, this is the same thing, basically?
Well, and this is a variance on parking requirements. Currently, our ordinance requires two parking spaces for every rental unit. In this case, there's 36 units, so that would require 72 parking spaces. They are proposing 63. Thirty-nine would be underground parking. Twenty-four would be surface parking. They would like to retain more of the green space on the side rather than pave it over. Eight of the 36 units will be one-bedrooms, and typically, you don't have two cars associated with one-bedroom units, and quite often, even in two-bedrooms, you don't always have two cars associated with two-bedroom units. We actually did the same thing with Phase One of Gateway. I think there was a variance of about 20 parking spaces on that side, and they don't even use all the parking spaces there, and there were three-bedroom units on that side. So, what we have here is, they're providing 63 parking spaces for the 36 units. We'll also have additional off-street public parking on the east side, as well as, and they'll probably prefer, if there is a need, to utilize the surface parking on Gateway One that's not used in their parking lot right now. So, again, they would like to prefer to keep some of the green space on the site rather than pave it over, and documenting the need, that the need is not quite there for 72 spaces.
But if there is, if they find that there is going to be a need, do they have the space available?
They do, yes, and I should have pointed that out. There is room on there to meet the parking requirements, so if at any point in time, you know, we are having issues out there, council can go back and order that those additional 10 parking spaces be added in.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved also. Now, we've got those all taken care of. We can move on down to the mayor, and we have a proclamation from the mayor, so...
Thanks, Les. Before I do the proclamation, though, I'd just like to welcome Robert Sorensen again as our student representative for this month. It's a pleasure to have you join us at City Council for the month of March. Thank you.
Thank you.
The proclamation reads, "City of Oatana, whereas the Exchange Club of Oatana is participating in the National Blue Ribbon Campaign, and whereas the National Blue Ribbon Campaign uses the month of April to bring awareness for the National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas almost one in every 100 children are being abused or neglected throughout the United States each year, and whereas an average of nearly five children die every day as a result of child abuse or neglect in the United States, and whereas the Exchange Club of Oatana is working to make our community a better place to live. During the month of April, they will post a sign at Central Park claiming it shouldn't hurt to be a child. Prevent child abuse signs will be posted and a flag flown at the Law Enforcement Center to increase public awareness of this campaign. Now, therefore, I, Thomas A. Koontz, Mayor of the City of Oatana, hereby proclaim the month of April 25th, April 2015, as Blue Ribbon Month, and ask all the citizens of Oatana to help support the Blue Ribbon Campaign and help bring an end to child abuse and child neglect. And in testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Oatana to be affixed the 17th day of March 2015."
Thank you. And moving on down to financial report, and with this, I'll ask Councilmember Schultz to read the report.
Okay. Total expenditures presented for approval tonight. A recap of checks over $20,000 are $111,829 to the Southeast Service Cooperative. That is the March health insurance premiums. Add to that other expenditures of $212,853. Our total expenditures presented tonight for approval of $324,682.60.
Thank you. You've heard the report. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Moving on down to the consent agenda items, which are items, event permits, council minute meetings, temporary permits, et cetera, all grouped into one motion. What is the council's wishes on this? What is the council's wishes on the consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Dave Burbank to approve the consent agenda items. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion there?
Sure. President, just want to note my involvement with item number 2.24, 2.27, and 2.28. I'm sorry, 2.29. I'm sorry. Not 2.28.
Okay. Thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the Steel County Fair Special Use Permit. The city's, part of that is over $16,000. I'm looking at some of the duties that our city crew does, I would think, could be handled by a county crew. This is a county event, not a city event. While I appreciate that it does affect the city of Oatana, I guess I would ask that the fair board go back to the county and maybe ask them to look at some of the requests that you have for the city and if they could do those services in the future.
Okay. Anything else?
When I looked through the application, we showed our costs. What we didn't show was that the fair does reimburse us for overtime expenses. Last year, that amount was about $5,500. So, at least from the public works side, it showed about $11,000 in expenses that we'd estimate. About half of that was reimbursed last year from the fair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These have been approved. We will now move on to action items, which we start with 3.4.1, First Reading of Proposed Ordinance 3-Dash-15, and this will go to Mark, City Code Ordinance.
Is this the topic of raccoons?
No.
Oh, excuse me.
You're ahead of him.
Right. In follow-up to our study session tonight is the first reading of an ordinance adopting the new code of city ordinances, and I would, for reasons stated in the memorandum, I would ask that you adopt the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't mean to catch you off-guard there, but it is, we do have to adopt it by ordinance, so...what is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Brent Svenby. Any further discussion? This being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Dodson?
Aye.
Okerberg?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
We have all seven ayes.
Thank you. The next one is also an ordinance, First Reading, Proposed Ordinance to amend the Chapter 90, restrict wildlife feeding, and again, we'll go to Mark with that one.
Chris Boosie asked me some time ago to draft an ordinance that would prohibit the feeding of raccoons and other animals enumerated in the ordinance, deer, turkey, ducks, and geese, with the object of preventing nuisance conditions associated with feeding the same. We do have an ordinance on the books that prohibits the feeding of deer, which was adopted, I believe, in 2013. The information that I've attached to the memorandum includes information from the DNR that discusses that the feeding of raccoons is discouraged. There's some interesting data about the raccoons there as well. The...there's no real impact seemingly expected of the budget at this time. It's hoped that voluntary compliance with the ordinance not feeding raccoons will reduce possible nuisance calls on animals and also damage. The ordinance would be regarded, the violation would be a petty misdemeanor. There's a mistake in my memo. That should be $300 instead of $200, which is the maximum amount for a petty misdemeanor. But nevertheless, the first violation of an ordinance would result in a written warning, and the second violation would then be a petty misdemeanor. Again, the amount of the penalty is the maximum amount for a petty misdemeanor. We think the city sees this more as an informational and educational type ordinance than one where they're going to be lowering the hammer on people, but the damage to the sub by raccoons is a real thing, so...
So, you're saying it should be 300 instead of 200?
Right. Just by definition, a petty misdemeanor is an offense punishable by a fine of up to $300. So, is it just a typo on my part?
Okay, so we should change that to 300 here?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the council? What is the council's?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion here? Seeing none, this being an ordinance, ask for roll call.
Councilmember Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Dodson?
Aye.
Okerberg?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
All seven ayes.
Thank you. The next one is ordinance 3.4.3, First Reading, Proposed Ordinance 5-Dash-15, Rezoning Request Z-239, and this one will go to Troy.
District, and it's currently vacant and being farmed. The request for the applicant is, which is, the cottage is, is to construct four 24-unit assisted living memory care units on the parcels, and be done over a number of phases over a 10-year period. Phase 1 construction is being proposed to begin in the spring and be open in November. Phase 1 would include construction of all stormwater improvements on the site, the first drive, half of the large driveway, the first building, as well as the joint parking area. Phase 1 would also include extension of sewer, a sewer main to serve the site, as well as boring of the water service. And then Phase 2 is anticipated to be in spring of 2017. This is an overall master plan for the site. It's three parcels right now. It would be combined under one parcel, and proposing to be in a PUD zone, which kind of locks them into the site plan. If they propose anything different on the site, they would have to come back before the Planning Commission and City Council and make those requests. Parking requirements would be meet, would be met by the proposal. Again, all stormwater improvements for the site would be constructed in Phase 1. There would be a retention pond in the southwest corner of the property, although all the detailed drainage plan has not been completed yet. Utilities would need to be extended to the site. They're proposing to extend the sanitary sewer along the main north along the east side of Austin Road. The city engineers indicated that they would take this on as a public line, provided they're deep enough to serve the vacant lot on the west side of Austin Road. And again, water services would be more underneath Austin Road. We did have a public hearing at Planning Commission. We did not receive any comments from anyone at that meeting. The applicant did go around and talk to the neighbors within the 350 feet who were notified within 350 feet of the site, and were able to explain the project. Most people were satisfied with the use, and so we did not really receive any negative comments pertaining to the proposed project. Since we had the Planning Commission, we've had a few people in the neighborhood concerned about stormwater, and stormwater on 4th Avenue specifically. And as you know, we have some stormwater issues in the southeast, ones that we plan on addressing in the next couple of years. One part of that, for Phase 1 of that solution, we are planning to do in 2015, and that's to take some of that water that currently comes off this site and runs through mid-block to 4th Avenue, and redirect that to the south along Highway 14. And then Phase 2 of that larger area solution would be to address the stormwater on 18th Street and 4th Avenue. And we do have a consultant looking at that area-wide watershed and how to address stormwater, and we're actually expecting that any time now. So my suggestion would be, since this is a request for a rezoning, it does require two readings, that we approve the first reading and take a look at the stormwater plans that come in on the site, as well as what we get back from the consultant, be able to more accurately depict what's going to happen stormwater-wise in that area before we give the second reading to the rezoning. So staff would recommend approval of the rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission, and again, we'll have some stormwater information, some more detailed stormwater information before we have that second reading becomes, comes before the council.
Thank you. Do you have anyone here that represents this organ?
We do have representatives for this project here, if you have any specific questions.
I guess my question would be, is have you seen any other people come forward and say they're concerned? Okay. I know it was last week at the Planning Commission meeting, but you know, sometimes people get a little behind and don't have a chance to speak till after it's over with. But just wanted to double-check with you on that. Thank you. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Kevin Rainey to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
I'm going to go with Dave Burbank on this one, and a second on this. Any further comments or questions here?
The only thing I would, I would just reiterate that point, that you know, we will want to make sure that we have a pretty good handle on the existing issues in that area before we proceed. You know, ideally, your development won't affect or won't add to any issues we currently have, but I think we do want to make sure we've got a handle on the existing problem.
Right.
Just in case there's any opportunity for that to add to it.
Yep. Yes, most definitely. Okay, we, any further discussion here? See none, again, being an ordinance, ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Burbank?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Svenby?
Aye.
Dotson?
Aye.
Okoberg?
Aye.
Schultz?
Aye.
Abraham?
Aye.
Of all seven ayes.
Thank you. This has been approved for the first reading, and we will look forward to getting some answers on the drainage by next council meeting.
That would be the plan.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Resolutions 3.5.1, Resolution 31-15, Membership in the Minnesota Environmental Science and Economic Review Board. We'll go to Kyle on this one.
Good evening. The City of Oatana was invited to be a member of MESRB, or as you mentioned, Minnesota Environmental Science and Economic Review Board. I did attend a meeting in Rochester as a guest, and I do feel this would be a good group to be a member of. It's organized through, I believe, Greater Minnesota Cities, drawn blank. And Flattery and Hood is the consultant that they're using. Essentially, it's cities together, working together to advocate for sound environmental science, particularly with our wastewater treatment discharge permit. The cost is about $8,000 per year to be a member, and we do feel that that would be beneficial and recommend approval of the Joint Powers Agreement.
Okay, thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council?
Kyle, how long has this organization been in existence? Do you have an idea off the top of your head?
I don't. I know we were, we were singled out as being one of the last cities of our size to join.
Okay.
In the area, so they put the sales pitch to us.
Were they able to demonstrate some successful lobbying efforts to prevent some maybe heavy-handed regulations, or?
I don't think they're that far along yet, but it is, they are, they're doing what they can.
Any other questions? I guess that's one of the concerns that I've got, is that what benefit the City of Oatana would receive from this?
Well, we are going to be coming up to a renewal of our wastewater discharge permit in 2016, so I think we will benefit greatly from being involved. The wastewater superintendent would be the one attending the meetings and
Okay.
keeping track of new developments. The science is being left behind in some of the decisions that are being made permitting-wise, and this group just feels that they should be based on, or the decisions should be based on science.
Okay. Les? Thank you, Greg.
I did talk to the lobbyist representatives group at a conference, and there are a lot of things coming down the pike, as Kyle says, that I think it's important we have our say on.
Okay.
I think it's probably a good idea.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving down to Resolution 32-15, to approve bids and award contract for Mineral Springs Parkway Project, and we'll go to Kyle.
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Thank you.
Last Wednesday, we received bids for the Mineral Springs Parkway Project. This was brought to you last year. There were some concerns. It was put on hold and brought back before. I believe we were able to address most of the concerns from last year. James Brothers Construction of Elysian, who also have a local presence, was the apparent low bidder at $529,398.60. That was under our estimated cost, and the cost will be paid from levy and assessments, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Brent Fendby to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion there?
I think we're all going to wait for you on that one, Brent. That's his baby.
All right. See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. We'll ask Greg to rejoin us. Next one is 3.5.3, Resolution 33-15, Approve Bids and Award Contract for LaMonte Road Project, and there we go back to Kyle.
This is another project that has been worked on for a number of years. We did modify the scope of this project. We, instead of going from Selby all the way to the I-35 Bridge, it has been shortened to go from Selby to Kim Lane. We believe it's a good project. It's still a large project and gets to economies of scale. We've met with the adjoining property owners, and the one person that came to the neighborhood meeting said, "How soon can you get it done?" So we, also, James Brothers Construction of Elysian was the low bidder at $564,490.94. The project will be paid for from state aid and assessments to the property owners, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff Okoberg on this one. And with that, any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving down to Resolution 36-15, I think I'm down too far here. 34-15, Authorized Change to Municipal and State Aid System Routes, and this will go to Kyle again.
Good evening. The city can designate up to 20% of its mileage as municipal state aid streets, where we can spend our about $1.2 million that we receive annually. The section of North Cedar from Rose Street to North Street is not currently on the system. We have approximately .6 miles that is not designated, and we would like to use .38 of that to designate Cedar Avenue. We see some improvements necessary to that in the near future, and would like to be able to utilize state aid money to pay for it. So we recommend approval of the change to our state aid system.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved. Moving down to Resolution 36-15, Authorized Advance for Approval of MSAS Project, and we're back to Kyle.
Last December, I asked for a resolution requesting approximately $400,000 of advancement. There was an error in our calculations. We didn't actually ask for enough, so this resolution would be correcting that, and we'll be requesting an advancement of approximately $750,000 for projects we plan to complete in 2015, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved also. Moving down to Resolution 37-15, to set date for public hearing to consider TIF 3-9, Bushel Boy Farms Expansion Project, and this will go to Troy.
So we have been working with Bushel Boy about a possible expansion of their facility, greenhouse space, in which they're looking to construct a 160,000-square-foot greenhouse expansion under their current facility in the industrial park. They are requesting tax increment financing to assist in that project. The estimated TIF amount would be approximately $100,000. Would be a pay-as-you-go TIF for up to nine years. We would have a TIF plan and more detailed information for the public hearing. There is minimal publication cost for establishing the hearing notices. There is consulting fees for the TIF financing, which will be paid for by the EDA out of their consulting budget, and administrative costs would be figured into the TIF plan, so that we could be reimbursed throughout the TIF for those administrative costs. So staff would recommend adoption of the resolution authorizing the setting of the public hearing for April 21st.
Thank you. And this is just to set the public hearing?
This is just to set the public hearing, correct.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Greg Schultz to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin Rainey. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion meeting has been set. Moving down to miscellaneous items, we have 3.6.1, Authorization to Advertise for Bids for 2015 Crack Ceiling Project, and now we back to Kyle.
The crack ceiling project is estimated to cost $120,000. That comes out of our operating budget, but any bids in excess of $100,000 require council approval. So we would like to go out for bids and request your approval to go, to do so.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? See none. What is the council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Nate Dotson to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Brent Fendby. Any further discussion there? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this has been approved to proceed with. Now we move on to public comments, and if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on items that are not on the agenda, I ask you to come to the microphone and please sign in. See none. We will move on to council comment, and we will start with Dave Burbank.
Just happy to see LaMonte Road Project moving forward. That's what I get the most calls and comments on.
Thank you. Kevin?
I think that's the final road near Ward that needs to be repaired, so. I want to thank Robert Sorensen for being here the last two meetings, and a special thank you to Mayor Coontz. The mayor was the driving force behind this, and I think anytime that we can get young adults active in city government, that's a great thing. So thank you for joining us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. And now we go to Brent.
Nothing besides anxious to get the Mineral Springs Parkway Project started and completed, to make it a lot safer for people using the park down there.
Thank you, Brent. And Nate?
Happy St. Patty's Day.
Thank you. Jeff?
No comment.
Greg?
Nothing to add. You remembered me tonight, but nothing to add.
Okay. I'm going to go to you, Bob.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the members of the board for welcoming to the meetings and letting me be present. I mean, it must have been a surprise, because as I'm aware by my teacher, it's one of the first, I'm one of the first students to be welcomed and be, to take part in this, and I'm just happy that I was welcomed here. Thank you to the mayor for coming up with the idea for this opportunity, and this was a great experience, and I hope that in the near future that it furthered my advancement in different politics. So thank you very much.
And yes, you are the first, so welcome. And we'll go to the mayor.
Several things. Pass out, Jeanette passed out the 2015 legislative priorities for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. There's seven of them. The League of Minnesota Cities is pretty much on board with all of those. So if you have any concerns, there's explanation sheets on there, and if you ever want to go up and lobby for any of those, I'm sure we can make those arrangements. March 30th at 5:30 PM at the MINDOT office, the I-35 Public Information Meeting will be taking place, and at 7:30, Trunk Highway 14 Public Information Meeting will be taking place. So, those are on March 30th at 5:30 and 7:30. March 19th, we have a ribbon cutting in Aspen Dell at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, so anybody that wants to come for the ribbon cutting, you're more than welcome to do that. I also received a letter from Girl Cross, and the letter reads, "Dear Mayor Koontz, I want to thank you for the appreciation expressed by members of the city council, employees, and citizens of Oatana in recognizing Kelly Arden and Rick Ellison at the city council meeting on March 3rd. As you may recall, Rick Ellison was unable to attend in person due to unforeseen circumstances. We are happy to report that Rick Ellison will be returning to work this week. With this in mind, I would like to invite you, members of the city council, to attend a brief presentation on April 14th at 4:00 PM, where we plan to present Rick Ellison with the award he was unable to receive in person. So, it's Tuesday, April 14th at 4:00 PM at the Oatana Clinic."
Thank you. And I did talk to Chris, so I'll talk to you later about that. Chris?
Nothing.
You have nothing, and my part, welcome, and thank you for coming and being the first on this one. With that, Chair will entertain a motion. Motion by Kevin Rainey to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Actually, now you're making a motion to go to close.
Motion to go to, closed here. For closed meeting.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn and go to a closed meeting by Kevin Rainey. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting adjourned.